I would like to call to order the July 25, 2019, planning public hearing to order. Called, uh, thank you, Chair.
Roll call.
Yes, roll call, Bill?
Sure. Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finerty.
Present.
Secretary is here, and Board members. John Blaney is absent. Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few words on some safety precautions. There are two doors. In case of an emergency, please exit those, go down the front stairs and out the front door. We have an expedited system, so if you want to speak, just fill out a card, and we've collected some, but Jackie is collecting more of these for the agenda number. Okay, so we're going to proceed in order. Item number one is Scuttle Bridge. Counsel, we have noticed.
We have noticed, Madam Chair.
Who would like to read? Do you want to read, Dennis?
Please take notice. In accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 25, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled Scuttle Bridge LLC. Site plan applications for the construction of a single-family dwelling with accessory structures and access driveway on a 16.6 acre parcel located in the CR-80 zoning district and situated in the agricultural overlay district, Aquafor Protection Overlay District, on the west side of Ocean Road, on the north side of Scuttle Hole Road, 2166 Scuttle Hole Road, tax map number 9391-18. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Phil Keith, Secretary. Do we have notice?
I have, yes, we have notice. Andrew Grunwald.
You want to have a presentation?
Well, yes, who's presenting for this?
I am.
Please, Linda.
Was there an error in that? Yeah.
Linda Riley, 235 Hampton Road, for the applicant, Scuttle Bridge LLC. As you know, because we've discussed this in a work session, my client is proposing to build one, one-family house, and some customary accessory structures, and it requires a site plan approval merely because it is in an agricultural overlay district and is more than 16 acres in size, just over 16 acres in size. We submitted the final plan, we submitted several plans showing a possible location of the house. We worked with the staff in terms of identifying what would be the best areas for development generally, and for preservation of soils, in the event that there ever is a subdivision application, although my client does not intend to submit a subdivision application and has not done so. We were asked for a yield map, which was submitted, and we also submitted a seven lot cluster plan that is the sort of thing, I think, that the planning board would be looking for if we did put in an application for a full subdivision layout. We paid attention to staying away from the prime soils, which are all on the easterly side of the property, as is the wetlands areas. There are some discrete wetlands areas, in addition to one pond, which does happen to be a lined pond, but without debating whether or not it's under your jurisdiction, because there are exemptions in the code for lined ponds, but without debating that, my client is voluntarily keeping more than 200 feet away for purposes of building this one house from the pond, as well as all flood wetlands. When we were talking earlier today, we talked about the fact that the code has a section 330, 184 N, that provides that unlike most site plans, unlike a commercial site plan, the intent here is not to pin down exactly where every building and every parking space is going to go, or anything like that. It's a one-family residence, but rather to identify the area which is appropriate for development, and that leaves a place for the right kind of open space, should there ever be an application in the future for a subdivision. So I have now, I didn't then, but I have now surveys to pass up that show the development area in yellow, and, or the approximate development, I mean, this is what my client intends to build in this area now. Obviously, nothing's written in stone for ever, in case there is a future subdivision, but what this shows you is it's consistent with the seven lot cluster plan, which has the yellow right here, the seven lot. It saves room for a road, in case someone wants to put it in in the future, which will have to be over on the far west side, and it saves 100 percent, well, I mean, it doesn't impact in any way, shape, or form, this particular project will not impact any of the prime soils, they'll be 100 percent undisturbed, and it won't disturb any area within 200 feet of wetlands or the lined pond. So, we still, my client still is anticipating building a house in this area. It may move 20 feet one way or the other when he gets his exact site-specific plans done, but it will, it will stay in the southwest area of this. And anything else, we understand, would have to come in with a modification.
So, Ms. Riley, is your client intending to subdivide the land at this time?
No.
But he could do so in the future. Now, you've submitted a plan of seven lots, but even if your client decides to subdivide in the future, he's not bound by seven lots, he might just want to divide one or two lots.
Correct. He has no intention of subdividing. If and when he does, it may well be fewer than seven lots. I think that's probably pretty likely, but, I mean, that it'll be fewer, if he does it at all.
And that more likely would be serviced by a common driveway as opposed to a road.
That's also true. It's probably more likely, but we, you know, actually, it was staff suggestion that we show sort of the max.
The max out, yeah.
Right. It's not what my client wants. He wants to build a house for himself, and enjoy it, and this beautiful property.
We had a work session with you this afternoon to get more details, so, thank you.
And I think I submitted a memo of law to you.
You did?
I want it to be part of the file, and you already have a number of plans, but this last one, I think, is helpful to you, from what I heard this morning. If there are any questions, I'll answer them.
Any other questions from the Board?
Nope.
So, I have Andrew Grunwald.
No questions.
No questions, okay. Anyone else wants to speak to this application? Yes?
My name is Pamela Harwood. I'm the Chair of the Bridgehampton CAC. With another committee member, we reviewed this application, and no objection to building the one house, but I have a question about the process. I don't understand, I understand that because of the size of the property, and the possibility for a future subdivision, that one has to go to the planning board for even the one house, but I don't understand what it all means when there is just, we have no intention now, there's a possibility of doing this, but we don't intend to. I don't know how that's meaningful in the process, to say, "Well, we'd probably build fewer," but I don't understand the possibilities, and the probablies, and the maybes, and how does that enter into this process? What does it mean?
Well, they would have to come back with
I know.
a subdivision application to this board.
But why have a planning board application for only one house, if they'd only have to come back later?
Because, well, the area is identified, they want to identify the building area now, because they don't have any intention now to subdivide.
Mm-hmm.
Their application is...
The provision is requiring that the house be sited on non-prime ag soils, so the real intention is to make sure that the house is...
That even this house?
Yes.
Good, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Thank you, Pamela Harwood.
Anyone else? Yes? Did you sign in?
Pamela?
Pamela, did you sign in? This application? Or sign in over here? The sheet is probably over here. We're just trying to keep track of people.
The sheet's over there.
Yeah.
I'll sign in.
I'm Larry Penny. I'm retired, but I have a small company, environmental measurements. I also am on the Board of the Friends of Long Pond Green Belt, and they're a bit concerned, but what I hear, I kind of like it, that this is in the watershed of the Long Pond Green Belt, and, but it seems that if maybe one house, maybe the fellow will say, "Hey, I really like this property," and maybe, or maybe the town will work something out, but I think it sounds okay, 200 feet away from the road, 200 feet away from the pond, sounds very good to me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak to?
My name is Darlene Javits. I live at 2148 Scuttle Hole Road, which is, I believe, this lot right here. When we got notice of the initial hearing, none of this was submitted, and you seem to be speaking of, he may have changed the location of where he's putting the house, so I just want to make sure that I have everything that we're discussing today.
Do we know how it was noticed?
Yeah, they, since then, they've shifted the house further away from that proposed driveway, but it's all within a development area. The section of the code does not require that their improvements be specific, it just has to be within a development area, so they've shifted it to the east 20 feet, to be further away from that road and the setback, but it's just a development area, so it's a concept plan. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Okay. And there would be another hearing if he were to try and subdivide again?
Yes, absolutely.
Because it looks to me like lots are kind of locked. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, please.
I arrived too late to sign in, but I'll do so now. Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm Preston Phillips. I reside at 1093 Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike, and I'm a contiguous neighbor to this particular property. I've been in communication with the owner since they purchased the property, and I can report that I believe they've been conscientious stewards of this property throughout their ownership. And I wrote a letter to the Board on June 7th, supporting the first application, and I'm just here to reiterate my support for this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Anyone else wishes to speak to this application? If not, we're going to close it with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion.
That's required by statute.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Moving on to 192 West Montauk Highway. Notice is proper for number two.
Oh, wait a second, until they...
Yeah.
Please take notice, in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 25, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time, at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled 192 West Montauk Highway. The request is for the site plan special exception application for the demolition of an existing car repair shop, and construction of a 2,000-square-foot convenience store with 1,000-square-foot second floor for storage, and gasoline filling station, six pumps, on a 90.156 square foot, 90,156 square foot parcel, located in the HB and R4 zoning district and the Aquafor Protection Overlay District, and the Central Pine Barrens compatible growth area at 192 West Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 9002213-17. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Phil Keith, Secretary.
For the applicant, David Gilmar, engineer, Farrell Fritz, give me time, I'm Mark Pallato, the project engineer, and he'll run through the site plan elements, and I'm just going to give you a little bit of the background of how we got here tonight. As the legal advertisement says, this property is located at 192 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays, and is in an HB zone. The lot at 90,000 square feet is more than double the size required by the HB zone for this use. To orient you, to the east, we have the Macy's store, and Panera, and the other stores that are located in that shopping center, and to the west, we have McDonald's and Stop and Shop. Again, the site plan application requests that we demolish the existing structures on-site, which was a gas station and service station, and put in a convenience store, and filling station with six pumps. This Board issued a negative declaration on the application in February of 2019. We obtained Zoning Board of Appeals approval for a variance from lot frontage from 200 to 170, and an interpretation that the convenience store is an accessory structure. We attended a pre-submission conference on this in April, I think it was April 25th, and there was nobody at the meeting to comment, and there was no written comment during the written comment period. With that background, I'll ask Mark to come up and just run through very quickly, it's a pretty easy site plan, but to run through it quickly, the site plan elements. Thank you.
Thank you. Elevations. Any elevations?
Good evening, Mark Pallato, Key Civil Engineering. Just very quickly, as previously mentioned, the application is for a 2,000-square-foot convenience store with 1,000 square feet of storage up in the attic area. Canopy is both forward of the building. The parking is both predominantly on the east and north side of the building. There are five stalls up in front, which include two ADA stalls. We meet the parking requirements, 26 are required, we provide 28. The site provides one curb cut along West Montauk Highway. We are expecting Suffolk County DPW approval shortly. We had some minor comments. It's requiring rights in, rights out only, and we have access with the shopping center mentioned, the Macy's Shopping Center, and, or at least proposal to mention, the shopping center, and with the Stop and Shop, that will actually be constructed as part of that, because Stop and Shop had already put their...
Cross-access.
Cross-access in, so we can just meet it perfect. That's it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question about the fuel tanks, the ground fuel tanks.
Yes.
Are you abandoning some refurbishing, taking out?
There are currently no fuel tanks there.
Oh.
No, predominantly, predominantly, it's a auto-repair facility. It doesn't pump gas any longer, and hasn't for some time, so the new, there are going to be new double-wall fiberglass tanks.
And it didn't pump gas in the past?
It did in the past, but I don't know exactly when they stopped pumping gas, but...
But a check will be made, Phase 1 will be done to see if there is...
Yeah, that's all been taken care of, yeah. We actually have approval from Suffolk County Health Department to put in...
So there's no fuel tanks?
We have a DEC spill letter, or clearance letter, which we have submitted. I can submit more copies.
Okay, so there's no tanks currently?
All clear.
Okay, thank you.
So that was a side of a DEC spill.
Yeah, yes, that's why.
So that, that letter says it's clear.
Which you should have, I can give you more copies.
No. It's checking.
Don't you have two curb cuts now?
Yes.
So you're going to go back to one?
Correct.
Can you briefly talk about the right-of-way on the east side, that, to the Capri? I mean, do you have rights over that right-of-way?
I don't know, but this, he's talking about this property getting a court...
That's not your property, though, right?
No, it's not. We put that in to show the cross-access agreement for a future connection.
So is, you're going to construct the cross-access right to the Macy's parking lot?
Yeah.
Well, I think this is proposed that we are giving our rights to give that easement and that cross-access, it's designed for future use. I don't know that we've secured it.
Do you have rights over that right-of-way, though?
No.
You don't?
We don't.
Do we know whose property that is?
That's the Macy's, no, no.
This, this small strip.
Connor, that's a flag.
No.
That comes up here, and then this, this is the Macy's boundary right here. So this, this is a right-of-way. I want to say this is some sort of preserve. It's a flag lot, I know, that comes here, and then it opens up in the back. It says, doesn't have the owner on it.
But your site plan shows improvements over that
I think that was for the future cross-access. I don't think we have it yet.
Yeah, just to show how it would work, yeah.
So where are you going to build your, where are you going to build the access to, just to the edge of your property line?
Yes, we would just cut it off at the property line, so someone could meet it.
Dennis, I think that was put in because we needed to situate the building, and how, how a cross-access would work there, and I think...
So you're not going to construct over that?
No.
At this time?
Not, not at this time, but at some future date.
Would you be doing the improvements, or would that be a future party, Macy, Kimco?
I believe the planning staff had suggested that there was an application for the Macy's, and Kimco, they were going to talk to Kimco.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if that's been secured yet.
There would now.
I mean, that would be really, that would be great for traffic.
Yeah.
It was a suggestion of staff, as we were coming through the process, which, you know, also involves...
I mean, I think the owner would build it now, if he legally can, I think he would build it, it's really not...
So you'd be willing to, if we could secure those rights, you'd be willing to build up to the Macy's parking lot?
Absolutely. I mean, it's just some paving and some curb.
The town might have rights to that already, in place.
I mean, that would really, you could literally get from Macy's all the way to McDonald's and Stop and Shop. That would really eliminate an awful lot of in-and-out, if people...
Oh, yeah. Very stressful, interesting.
Now, the driveway in, the entrance, is that going to be a raised triangle there?
Yes, this is a raised...
To try to eliminate left-hand turns, right?
Correct, yep.
And it'll be marked as such?
Yep. It's, like I said, it's on the one-year line of being approved by Suffolk County DPW.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you had cross-access, you could get to the light at either Macy, well, the Panera's exit.
It's a very good design, yes.
Yes.
I agree.
Because that is also a Hampton Jitney stop in front of Macy's, right before your gas station, so you have also the bus, the buses going through that area, too. That cross-access is important.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this application?
It's a special exception, 10 days.
10 days.
So, we'll close this with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis. Second, second by Robin. All in favor?
Aye.
Substitution, six in favor, one absent. So we're closing with 10 days.
Two blocks. Zuccarelli wants them.
Zuccarelli wants them now.
Okay. We have notice on the Woods, number three.
Who's reading?
Who's reading?
I'll read.
Robin.
Yeah, I'll read.
Okay.
Number three?
Okay, please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 25, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the preliminary application entitled Woods at Hampton Bays. The preliminary application consists of a 20-lot planned residential development cluster plan, including a recharge basin in the southwestern portion of the site, and three separate open space parcels totaling 5.777 acres, which is 201,653 square feet of open space, the equivalent of 25% of overall lot area, situated in the R20 zoning district and the Aquafor Protection Overlay District, located at 125 Old Riverhead Road in the Hamlet of Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 902053-12.1. By order of the Planning Board, Town of Southampton, Phil Keith, Secretary.
For the applicant, David Gilmar, Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. It's a pretty straightforward subdivision. Today, we're able to give you a yield map, which shows that this 16.5 acre lot could yield 26 lots. We have a preferred alternative cluster plan, which shows 20 lots. Two of those lots will be affordable. We have just today given you the new plan. Does it show cul-de-sac at the bottom?
Yeah, this has the...
Yes, this is the new plan.
Has the, you have the new one?
Yeah.
Is that with or without the recharge?
It's without.
Without?
And that, that map was created after some discussions with staff this week. As the legal advertisement notes, there's a 35% opens, I'm sorry, 65% open space, 60% 35% open space requirement. I'm thinking of the Aquafor Protection Overlay District, which creates some more clearance issues for us. So it's a, you know, we have the standard yield map, and then the reduced map... So it's a, you know, we have the standard yield map and then the reduced map. We have the surveyor here, and we can answer any questions.
Is that natural drainage in that depression in the center of it?
Here?
Yeah.
Did the surveyor come up?
Because you took out the recharge basin, and you're now relying on individual drainage structures within the subdivision.
My name is Cath H. Hackman, surveyor, 1814 Mill Country Road, Bridge, New York. After talking with staff, we're going to go to straight leaching pools on the alternate layout. And that, for the recharge basin end.
So, so what is that depression shown on your map?
That's not a depression, that's a hill.
That's a hill?
There was comments going on about the hill and slopes over 20%. So we're showing that we're leaving that in the buffer, I mean, the open space area.
That's a natural, that's naturally existing, that?
A natural hill, yes.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. So you have an exit onto Old Riverhead Road?
That's it.
And that's the only exit?
Excuse me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
No safety concerns with such a large subdivision that you have one way in and one way out?
That was at the request of the Planning Board and the originally...
Planning staff?
Staff, and the originally approved plan. There was a 26-lot subdivision prior to this that had the same, similar layout. And we reduced the 26 lots down to 20 total.
If there's an issue, we can certainly discuss that. The problem is about an emergency access. It would seem to be, you wouldn't want to come down from Sunrise Highway, maybe there's an opportunity.
There's an opportunity up on Old Riverhead Road.
Well, that's where the one entrance is.
That's where the one.
By maybe use...
I'm not sure if there's any others that make any sense, but we can certainly look at that.
We can talk about it, okay. Any other questions on, from the board? We have, thank you, Adam Ortiz.
Our members, I first wanted to say thank you very much from the last hearing on this project. It was clear to me that you slowed the project down, and that's what the board is supposed to do. So we really appreciate it in terms of a resident of Hampton Bays, 20 years plus, very appreciative to see the board doing that. I'm at 92 Old Riverhead Road, right across from this development, and I don't know where the police station is in reference to this entrance or exit, but that might be a question you may want to ask, because I don't know if that would be an issue or not, or maybe you may want Southampton PD to give you somewhat of an idea in terms of how this will impact their coming and going. I know that, Mr. LaFerr, you just mentioned an opportunity to have another exit and entrance here in this area, but these are houses in this area here, and I'm just not sure if, personally, I would be appreciative of having two, or I guess four, entrance and exit ways for this development. So I actually would support this, but I think that Southampton PD should know where exactly that's going to be placed.
That road looks like it's right across from Red Creek Park, almost directly in line.
Even there as well. I just don't know if, again, I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I would say we may want to be careful in left and rights, where we have different entrances and exits at Southampton municipalities. So I, my other comments were, I noticed that the taxes that we're paying on this property for the last five years ranged around $15,000. So in my quick arithmetic, that's $1,000 an acre. So I, I, I hope that the owner of this property recognizes that the average tax of the houses in that area are around $10,000, and we've been paying that for the last five years or so. I don't know how the numbers work out, but it's a nice piece of property for that amount of tax being paid. My last comment is that you will be receiving a lot more cases with regards to Hampton Bays, I would guess, with the economy doing well. Please take a moment to understand that Hampton Bays does not have a huge tax base, and so decisions that you may and may not make, even though it may not impact taxes, if you can ask more questions in terms of how the yield will be, the amount of families, the amount of students going into the school district, those are concerns that myself and other Hampton Bays residents will have now, particularly now because there's a lot of activity happening in Hampton Bays with regards to the overlay district and things of that nature. Once again, thank you again for slowing this down a little bit. This is how the process is supposed to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this application? Number three, yes, Dorothy Marin?
Marino.
Marino.
Thank you for letting me speak. My only concern with this, well, not my only concern, but my biggest concern involves the fact that this is an aquifer protection area, and I believe, if I heard them correctly, they want to clear everything but 35% of the land. I also live across the street from this property at 88 Old Riverhead Road. I was only allowed to clear 50% of my property because of the aquifer area, and I respect that, and I know that all of my neighbors respect that, and I don't think that it's right to give them an exception to go from 50% down to 35%. It's going to affect the water quality. It's going to affect the water that we have, and I just don't approve of that much of an exception.
Let me clarify something. The overall tract, they're preserving 35%. Each one of these lots is going to be subject to the same clearing that your house was. So each of those lots is going to be constrained by whatever lot size it is. So there's going to be additional preservation on each lot.
That may be, but you're still going to clear everything but 35% of 16 acres.
No, no.
That's not what he's saying?
No. 35% is going to be just preserved as an open space preserve. That's not going to be touched. Then each house lot, you see, each, each, each of those houses are going to be restricted into what they can clear, because they're in the aquifer protection district, just like your houses. I don't know whether that number is going to be 50%. It depends on lot size. Is your house on an acre, or?
It's a shy acre, so...
It's a shy acre. These, these are smaller lots, so they're going to be able to clear a little bit more than your lot was allowed to be cleared, but they will have to be, in other words, these lots can't go in and clear-cut their lots. They're going to have to preserve additional acreage on their lots.
Okay, but of the 16 acres that are there, how much of that is going to be cleared?
We can generate a number for you.
Okay, because that, that's very concerning to me.
Yeah, it's an easy number to back in, because we can take all the, we know we start with 35%, then we have to take the clearing calculations for all these additional lots and add that to the 35%. So you're probably looking at maybe 50 or 60% of the total tract.
And that's including the roadways and...
Yep, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you, thank you.
You have to...
Yeah, I have to go up there. Does this get a Pine Barrens review too? It's in the Pine Barrens, I think.
I don't think so.
It is?
Oh, did?
Were incompatible?
It's compatible.
It went to the pine barrens.
It did go to the pine barrens.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else on this application? Three none. We'll take a 30-day written comment period?
I'll move it.
Moved by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in extension, six in favor, one absent. Uh, number four, I see that someone is here for number four, Patricia Lewis. That application was not sufficiently noticed. And so it, so at the... Can you just identify, yes. Okay, so it wasn't sufficiently noticed, which means we can't open it. We can't open the hearing, because legally it was not sufficiently noticed. So... So... So on August... So on August 8th, at the Planning Board meeting, a new date will be set for September 12th.
But you will receive, adjacent property owners will receive certified registered mail notice of that new hearing date. We're not sending it today, but it will likely be September 12th. That date will be set at the August 8th Planning Board meeting. The applicant failed to send the notices by certified mail 10 days prior.
Well, we can't engage in, in any kind of discussion on that without...
Well, we don't have jurisdiction to have the discussion, frankly. That's the problem.
We have to wait. We have to wait. Okay, so put September 12th on.
And you can certainly visit the Planning Department any day during business hours and ask to see the proposal.
Gloria?
Is it Phil Wright?
Phil Wright.
Jackie, is that the proposal?
How memorable was that?
Number four, is that the proposal that's up on the wall?
But Zuccarelli has it, right?
Zuccarelli has it, and Gloria has it.
And Gloria has it.
Put two more applications together.
Give Zuccarelli the longest one.
I'll give him the next one.
The biggest words.
And I'll give Gloria the Connor property.
Biggest words.
He dumped us.
He did.
Okay, so we're going to be moving on to number five, which is the Nemec property.
We have proper notice, Madam Chair.
We have proper notice, and, and Jackie, Zuccarelli's going to read, please.
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 25, 2019, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, to consider the covenant amendment application entitled Nemec, no, Nemec, property lots one and two. The applicant requests an amendment to the declaration of common access driveway and utility easement associated with the subdivision to amend the common driveway language, which in error granted an easement for parcel two over parcel two, and said request will correct and clarify the appropriate language and the NITAS and bounds description for the required common driveway, resulting in both lots having access over the common driveway easement area, which is located, and flag strip belonging to parcel two. These properties are known as 132 and 134 Hill Station Road within the hamlet of Shinnacock Hills. Suffolk County Tax Map Numbers 900-177-2, 38.1 and 38.2, by order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Good evening, members of the board. Timothy S. McCully, 41, Meeting House Lane, Southampton. As the notice indicates, this, this was a subdivision, a two-lot subdivision approved by this board in 2014. One lot was 132 Hill Station Road, fronts on Hill Station Road. The other one is a flag lot to the back. And one of the conditions that you imposed on that subdivision, that there be a common driveway for 100 feet, Lot Two in favor of Lot One. Unfortunately, when I started looking at the documents when this client came to me, and I don't know who drew these, who approved them, or whatever, but everything's a little backwards. What it did was, it set forth to meet some bounds of the common driveway. The common driveway actually was built, but the easement in place gives an easement to Lot Two over Lot Two instead of one to two. So that all has to be corrected, and that's what we're trying to, but, and that declaration has the standard language that says it has to be approved by a majority plus one. So here I am, asking that you acknowledge that there was a mistake and allow me to correct that covenant, so that it complies with what your intentions were in the original subdivision. And that's basically why we're here.
Very forward. Any other comments?
Yeah.
No one wishes to speak to this?
And I would ask if you, I don't know if timing-wise it makes a difference...
10-day written comment.
To wait, pardon me?
10-day written comment period.
Okay.
We'll get this on the agenda.
We'll get it on the agenda, on the August 8th.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I will supply, I have already drafted the new covenant. I'll supply that together with the proper title certification for your council to review ahead of time.
Yeah.
Okay?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So a motion for 10-day written comment period?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Number six is the Connor Freelander Gateway One. Gloria, can you read?
Yeah, I stopped coughing so I could, I could read.
Jackie. So we don't get messed up.
We have notice, Madam Chair.
Jackie, could you take the map maybe and move us closer to the podium, number six?
So I'd just like to say a few words about this scoping session, that when you're speaking to an impact, if you can address a specific, for example, I'll give you an example. If you're speaking to traffic impacts, speak to a particular intersection that you want examined, or what kind of development is happening in two miles. In other words, the specifics, because of those specific questions will then be incorporated into the scope, all of the public comments, and that you'll also be able to put them in writing and other comments. But if you just speak generally about the impact, minus the specifics, it's not as effective or as clear in terms of the final document, the final scope, that the Planning Department will prepare. The draft scope is prepared by the applicant, submitted to us for your review, our review, comments go in. We have to close the comments by April 2nd in order to get a document April 8th, because we're on a clock. I mean, August 8th. Yeah, it's...
It's a day, a word.
There are restrictions to 60 days from the submission of the draft scope, so I just wanted to say that, because I know there are many people speaking here. With that, we turn it over to you, John.
No, Gloria has to read it in.
Oh, sorry. Go and breathe, yes.
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing on the draft scope will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 25, 2019, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, to consider the draft scope for the site plan application entitled Cone and Freelander Gateway LLC. The request is for an application to construct two buildings, 13,000 square feet and 14,000 square feet, for a total of 27,000 square feet, for a fitness facility use and associated parking on properties totaling approximately 8.1 acres, fronting on freshwater wetlands, Kellus Pond, situated in the HB and R60 zoning districts, located at 2071 Montauk Highway in the hamlet of Bridge, Hampton. Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-84-1-15, 16.2 and 16.8, by order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Good evening. My name is John Bennett. Bennett and Reed, 212 Winmill Lane, Southampton, New York. We represent the applicant. With me here is Steve Rorota from Areas Design, Ellen Feldman from Cashin and Associates, and Lorraine Moschetta from, who's the KLD Engineering Traffic Engineer. I'm going to be brief, because the primary reason for this is for you to hear public comment on the scope of the already submitted SECA review. Just a very brief outline of the project. It's an 8.33-acre parcel on the south side of Montauk Highway, across from what's generally known as the Kimco Shopping Center. Most of the property is located in the HB's district, but a portion of the property along Kellus Pond or Creek located within the R60 zoning district. There are two matters before you. One is a subdivision of the property into three lots, each of which would be conforming in size. The subdivision would divide the southerly portion of the property along the zoning district boundary, so creating a lot that's entirely located within the R60 zone, which good planning directs us to do. Lot Two, the easterly portion of the property, is proposed to be developed by two connected buildings that would contain the Equinox Gym. One building would be 13,000 square feet in size, connected by a breezeway with a proposed building two, which would be 1,400 square feet in size. We filed an application to the zoning board of appeals for variance relief from the 15,000 square foot size limit. The Planning Board assumed lead agency, and at the applicant's request, a POSDEC was adopted on April 11, 2019, and a draft scope was prepared by Cashin and submitted with the town. The Planning Board added... The Planning Board add ex option required a public input, a public hearing on the draft scope. I have just a couple preliminary comments. I don't have a presentation with, for, no presentations planned for the other members of the team with me, because that's not the purpose of this hearing. I, I would be remiss not to respond to a couple of pre-hearing comments that I had heard revolving around competition about this site, creating some competitive concern for businesses in the area. So I did want to address that, but only that. The rest we can save. The court, in a case called Sunco versus Syracuse Industrial, a board had been criticized for not addressing economic impacts of the project, and the court properly said, in finding that the, that the SECRE does not cover those impacts, was those impacts involve purely competitive economic factors, not environmental ones, and therefore were beyond the scope of SECRE. That shouldn't surprise anybody who's also familiar with the Society of Plastics case, the Court of Appeals case, in which the court said competitive economic factors are not to be considered. There was one case, there's sort of an errant third department case involving a, what's the big retailer, a Walmart that was going to go, be built outside of a village, and the concern there was the effect that it would have on the downtown area. But remember what we're proposing here, we're not proposing a retail operation. In that Walmart case, there was a concern that all the retail, all the stuff was going to come, all, all the, the uses were going to come out of the village and go into what is one of these downtown busters. That's not the issue here. Bridgehampton is a village, actually, if you drive up and down Village East Hampton, most of the uses there, almost all of them, have a very, what I would call, an inelastic supply curve, supply and demand curve. It's food and alcohol, real estate offices, high-end furniture and clothing boutiques. And what's interesting about it is you don't have to, you don't have to look very far to the, to, to, to realize, but despite the fact that you have the only significant-sized shopping center east of the canal with retail, and this is not retail, that hasn't affected the Bridgehampton downtown district. As a matter of fact, it's as healthy as I've seen it in my, in my memory. What I would also note for you is that, as it relates to the relief requested before the zoning board of appeals, in three cases, all, all of which I've handled, one in Hampton Bay and two in Southampton, the zoning board of appeals expressly stated that the purpose for the 15,000 square foot size limitation was to curtail block, box stores, these downtown busters, which unequivocally do have impact on existing retail. But this is not a retail suggest, a store. So I leave those items for your consideration as they, as they, as they impact the scope and comments on the scope. But other than those comments, since your, the primary function is to hear public comments on the scope, I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave that to, leave that to the public and the board.
Thank you. No one else on your team is speaking, John?
I don't think it's appropriate or necessary.
Okay.
It's really here to.
Okay.
Unless you disagree.
The first name we have is Bonnie Verbetsky. By the way, there's not a rigid timeframe here, but you will hear a three-minute thing go off and just conclude your comments.
I'm Bonnie Verbetsky, the president of Bridgehampton Action Now. It's a not-for-profit organization, and we have members who share a common goal of preserving the community, the character of the community, very important, and the environmental health of the water, land and air. So I would like to hand out from our attorney, Fred Eisen, Bud, a letter for each of you. Sorry I didn't take any time to do this, but this is very important.
Yes.
For each of you, and I'll give you the rest, Jackie, later.
Thank you.
So, okay, so now I've handed that letter from Fred Eisen, but he represents Campolo, Middleton and McCormick. Anyway, we, this addresses many of the concerns of BAN's members about the draft SECRE scoping statement prepared by Connor Friedlander. We are very concerned that the applicant appears to believe that the DEIS needs only study the impacts from the 27,000 square foot Equinox, physical fitness facility, across from Bridgehampton Commons. As you well know, the pre-submission site plan prepared by the applicant showed structures totaling 77,500 square feet. The applicant must be required to examine the impacts of the Equinox Gym, along with those from Bridgehampton Commons and from the other parcels owned by the applicant, which, when built, will greatly exacerbate the expected impact from the Equinox Gym. And I know that you know that the gyms today are totally different than in 2003. There's a whole, a bunch of letters, a group of letters there that will explain that. And we emphasize at Bridgehampton Action Now, the importance of an adequate traffic study. BAN, which is our group, hired Steve Schneider, an expert traffic engineer, who prepared a letter on the scoping document, it's in your letters, submitted. It is of utmost importance to us that the developer be compelled to take actual traffic counts at peak times during the summer months, which is now, in August, in and out of Bridgehampton, especially across from the Commons. But it all runs in, it backs up to Watermill and to Sagaponic. So they really should do that at this time, before the scoping document is, is done. The other interest we also focus on is the impact project will have on groundwater and the nearby watershed, Kellis Pond. BAN has acquired studies from Larry Penny and Peter Dermody, environmental specialists, whose letters submitted once again show the importance of making the Connor Friedlander developer prove that discharges, et cetera, and how an oversized commercial development of this size will impact Kellis Pond. Cyan bacteria is a very dangerous bacteria. It is, it is from the blue-green algae bloom. It is linked to ALS disease, which I'm very involved, and I'm on the board of an ALS foundation, Project ALS in New York. And it's very scary. And ALS is known as Lou Gehrig's disease, for those who don't know. Anyway, I know that Larry Penny, he knows that a lot of this is linked. I'm not saying that it causes it, but you know that they close the beaches when they, or any type of swimming or activity of beach, the Suffolk County Health Department will close it down if they see blue-green algae blooms. We ask the Planning Board to carefully review the impact on the character of the community. That's in addition. In closing, Bridgehampton Action Now, along with many groups and concerned residents, expect that these impacts will provide the basis for the denial of this Connor Friedlander application, which is before the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you. John Creedler.
I'm Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. Thank you for hearing me. I'm a year-round resident of Bridgehampton, and I drove here this evening, leaving my home at 5:05. And driving the 6.4 miles took me 40 minutes to get here. And that's without any additional traffic from the agreed enlargement of TJ Maxx and Marshalls, and that's without the cars that will result, in all likelihood, from 432 parking spaces for the Equinox development. So what I, what I would hope could be included is the largest possible focus on traffic, particularly traffic as it exits from the Bridgehampton Commons, on Snake Hollow Road, and in the area that would be occupied by the Equinox facility. Our town is becoming so congested that it's very hard to go through it. That has an impact on the character of the town, of the ability of the town to conduct local business, and of people to be able to move, to move around. One of the things that differentiates fitness centers or, or facilities today, is the very large number of people that come for an hour, an hour and a half, and then go. So there's a very heavy number of cars, large number of cars coming and going. And we've seen with SoulCycle on Lumber Lane, which has only 80 parking spaces, not 432 or something like that exactly, what an impact that has in terms both of traffic, but also of parking on the road. So it seems to me that those are issues that need to be focused on in the impacts, et cetera. In addition, the location is very problematic. There's already serious problems with traffic coming out of the Bridgehampton Commons, which I noticed as I drove by it this evening. If you have an additional large number of cars entering and exiting across the street, that can only make traffic much more congested than it is now. What's needed then, in the environmental impact study, is a comprehensive, detailed and realistic focus on how bad current congestion already is, on the likely impact of the TJ Maxx Marshall expansion, and then the additional impact of the proposed Equinox project. In conclusion, I do not object to a property owner's development of his or her property by right, but I'm seriously concerned about the likely impact of greatly increased traffic on Montauk Highway, inconsistent with the character and the sustainability in our hamlet, and I oppose the granting of the requested variance. A 2,000, 27,000 foot square foot Equinox is too big and will generate too much additional traffic. Thank you.
Excuse me.
So we ask you just to submit your comments as well to us.
Okay.
Did you say 432 parking spaces?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Not on this property, is that right, John?
432, that's the number.
Yes, that's what is, the number. That's the number.
I find that extraordinary.
It, that's the, it's page two of the draft DEIS.
150 is.
432 for the total development.
For the total.
For all the parcels combined.
For all the parcels.
Nine parcels.
Okay.
That's page two of the DEIS.
Of the scope.
Scope, yeah. Draft DEIS scope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So make, make sure that we have copies of your comments, so that we have a record. Julie Burmeister.
Julie Burmeister, Bridgehampton CAC, and a longtime permanent resident of Bridgehampton. I have to disagree with Mr. Bennett about the economic impact. Somewhere along the line, we have got to consider this. Equinox Gym is one of the major international luxury fitness centers in this country. I think they have over 100 fitness centers throughout the world, and they can even, if you buy, you can buy a special membership benefit at Equinox, which allows you to, if you belong to one Equinox fitness center, you can join any other. Equinox is, I did a little research on the internet, Equinox is a major international luxury fitness center, which also owns SoulCycle, Blink and Pure Yoga. Now, I'm not up on all, I know about SoulCycle, I do not know about Blink and Pure, Pure Yoga, but I'm assuming they're large money-making operations. Equinox, Equinox is a subsidiary of the related companies, one of the largest real estate development and property management companies in the United States, and I got that from Wikipedia. So this, we're not talking about something even pretending to be small entering our hamlet here. Equinox, fitness centers can offer the following, and I think most of you know this, personal training, yoga, martial arts, cycling, Pilates, boxing, dance, bar, spa, a can-offer, retail shop. Matter of fact, Mr. Schneiderman at one of the meetings in the past mentioned that Equinox was planning to operate a spa. I don't know. What will be the impact of Equinox on local fitness, small fitness centers throughout the area? Will it siphon off parts of the summer population who make our local centers profitable? Members of Equinox can buy, have I ever mentioned that? This, this action is, to me, just like allowing a Walmart to move in, and it is bound to have some negative impact on the small business, many of which, there are many small business fitness centers, that Sag Harbor, Watermill and Bridgehampton. And, and you know, years ago, a similar application was rejected for Barnes &amp; Nobles, and I don't see much difference between 20-some thousand square foot Barnes &amp; Noble and, and a Equinox Gym, fitness gym center. These large, these large business entities create economic kill zones within the surrounding community, and I use a number of the fitness centers for my health, and I would hate to see them in any way affected by Equinox coming in it, because I could not afford an Equinox gym. So I, as I say, I do really disagree with Mr. Bennett's inclusion that some, if it isn't under SECRE somewhere, the economic impact has got to be considered. So, and my last comment is, do we really want to add this kind of development to the East End, especially in an area so congested with, already with traffic?
Great, thank you.
I have a copy, I'll give it to you.
Carrie Millard.
I'm Carrie Millard from Bridgehampton, and I live on Matthews Lane, which is between Halsey Road and Ocean Road, about a mile east of Kellis Pond. And I'm very aware of the deer from Kellis, which every morning walk through two fields, blessedly we still have two fields, to our property and try to destroy our bushes and trees. And I'm also very aware of the birds which live on the pond and fly over to sit on our trees. This past winter and early spring, I saw on numerous occasions a magnificent, huge, bald eagle, which sat casing the joint, outside my kitchen window. On the East End, we live in an area of incredible natural beauty, which we keep fouling up with development. And I urge you to keep in mind open space when you consider the plans for the huge gyms that are going in supposedly beside Kellis. People still fish in Kellis, as I did when I was a teenager, and there's public access to the water there. And the eagles are returning, even though DDT devastated them and removed them from the scene for years. We really don't need any more gyms. They're already all over Southampton, drawing huge numbers of people. I go to SYS several times a week, and I can recommend it to anyone who needs an exercise bike, or a squash court, or wants to play soccer at a reasonable price. What we need are areas for wildlife and for humans who still wish to enjoy the natural beauty of the East End. It would be marvelous if this land were given to the town, or bought by the town, as a way of preserving our shrinking open space. Thank you.
Thank you. We have you here, Bob, on a card.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Board members. My name is Bob DeLuca, and I serve as President of Group for the East End. I have a comment letter, which I'll hand up, which probably has a couple of dozen recommendations, and I will spare you the agony of going through them all. I think I'll just use my time really to focus on three issues. And one of them is, you know, as a lead agency under SECRE, your obligation is to look at the overall action. So when you look at the Equinox portion of the site, you really do need to look at what else is going to go on, and how it's going to go on, and what else could go there, and traffic flow and traffic volumes. And all of that has to be considered in every aspect, from wastewater design to basically how you're going to get people in. how you're going to get people in and out of that property. So I just wanted to offer that. The second issue really is probably the most important power that any of you have as a lead agency, is the power of requiring alternatives that mitigate environmental harm. And in a property like this, which I can tell you, because in 1985, I worked on a car wash application that was proposed under property. This is a problematic piece of property. Where it is, what it's zoned, how you get people in and out of there, how you develop it, is a real problem for the owner as well as the community. And so you, as the planning board, have great latitude in terms of the types of alternatives that you can ask an applicant to provide you with. And one of the things I think you really need to look at is, you know, it's clear that this project, one of the reasons it's in front of the zoning board is because it doesn't conform to your duly adopted rules and regs, your planning considerations for Bridgehampton, and your town code with respect to floor area limitations in the highway business zone. So you need to take a look at this project in terms of what would be allowed there under as-of-right conditions as a starting place. And then you need to overlay on top of that, this particular site, with respect to its view shed, with respect to its proximity to surface waters, with respect to proximity to the wetlands that are there, and certainly with proximity to the fact that this is probably one of the worst and most congested traffic arterials that you have in the town. And every single thing that you try to squeeze onto it only makes matters worse. Now, you know, the good news from a planning standpoint is you have a lot of latitude in terms of what you pick. In fact, you're directed by the law to pick a reasonable alternative. I'm not saying that you can tell them they can't do anything with the property, but a reasonable alternative that best mitigates environmental harm. If this project isn't it, then you all get to decide what that project ought to be and how it ought to conform to the standards of the highway business zone. And all of those opportunities under the highway business zone, you should pick a few and take a look at. And they may be projects that I don't particularly love, but from the wastewater standpoint, from the traffic standpoint, from the visual impact standpoint, you have an obligation to do that. And I think it's easy to kind of get lost in all of this, because this is a major project in and of itself. So I ask you to keep that in mind, and I also ask you to really think about, the issue that Mr. Bennett raised earlier was also raised before the zoning board. He and I disagree on this, because I would argue that when the town adopted its, you know, big-box legislation, which limited the square footage and highway business to 15,000 square feet, that was an adopted planning policy, okay? That planning policy had to do with the overarching planning goals of the town. It wasn't that a bunch of business people came in here and told you to don't do SECRE or do it in a way that helps our business. It was intended to not undermine business, but that's a planning measure. And back at that hearing, I had taken a look around, and within about five or six miles of this place at the time, there were 21 different facilities that offered everything from massage and yoga to working out to whatever else you do in these kinds of gyms or fitness clubs. So in my comments, I'm handing up to you the names of those places, maybe a few of them have changed, I don't know, but you can take a look. And I think that's a really important issue for the planning board to take a look at. You have to decide whether or not this issue of, you know, how much weight do you give economic interest and an environmental review is a critical issue. And the other thing you should take a look at is, under the law, the finding statement that you will write for this project at the end of the environmental impact statement says that it is your job to rationally balance the environmental and economic and social interests of the community and rendering a determination. Economics piece is built right in there. You can't do one to the exclusion of the other, but certainly it's something that you factor in as you make those decisions. And if you go along that course, and you remember you're looking at the overall action, and you remember the power that you retain in terms of alternatives, and you make sure those alternatives look at the most sensitive variables on this property, and in the end, you go back to your own code, your own rules, your own regs, and say, why did we put this 15,000 square foot thing there in the first place? And if you can answer that question in the affirmative, then you probably shouldn't approve on one of the most difficult properties to build on Montauk Highway, something which is out of line with those documents that you've already spent years and lots of money to adopt. And I ask you to think about those things, and I will leave it there. But I thank you for your time, and of course, we'll be back for the review of the document when it's ready. So thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Harwood.
Pamela Harwood, Chair, Woman of the Bridgehampton CAC. Men and pure women, I appreciate your guidance at the beginning of this portion, because it will allow us to think about the specificity over there of what we would like you to do and put that in our written comments, which may come after today. But I, before I read my prepared statement, I do want to, as Bob did, counter one of the things that Mr. Bennett said about, well, this isn't a retail facility. Everything we've researched about Equinox tells us that it has the capacity to be a retail facility. Other Equinoxes around the country have juice bars, snack bars, they sell, they have gift shops, they sell t-shirts, they sell exercise clothing. So this might very well, why else would you need 27,000 square feet, not just for a bunch of bicycles? This could be a huge complex that includes retail uses. So I have to counter that. I also have to counter the fact that Bridgehampton Main Street is so healthy, everything's rented. Well, anybody who's familiar with Bridgehampton and our other villages and hamlets knows that these stores are ever-changing. The rent is so high, the environment's so competitive, one closes down, another one opens up. Just because it looks smaller than other, like Southampton Village, doing very well, doesn't mean it's healthy. I also have to say, my husband right before, on our way, said, gee, 27,000 square feet of a fitness center, right on the most congested part of Montauk Highway and just north of Kellis Pond, what could go wrong? And I thought that really summed it up. I also want to let you know that I had brought with me tonight some photographs that I took a year ago of the SoulCycle, Equinox-owned SoulCycle. I took these photographs, and I probably mentioned it at a previous public hearing a year ago, because I think this has been going on for about three years. SoulCycle on Butter Lane. I wanted to have a chance to put them up on the wall for you to see, but we were a little bit late. We thought we'd take the back roads, because Main Street looked so congested. And I went on Google Maps, and they said, no, go on 27. I said, that can't be right. So we went up Snake Hollow, backed up, all the way back to Montauk Highway. We got to Scuttle Hole, so backed up that we said, Google Maps was right, let's go back to the highway. And that was even quicker. That's what's going on out here. And as we've said before, I want to address the traffic. Specifically, 80 bicycles an hour in each class, 80 cars going in. We're talking about, the curb cut would be at the existing light, I believe, where the Commons is. And I know, you know that we vehemently oppose the expansion of TJ Maxx. It was approved. And I remember that you tried to say, well, we have to direct everyone back to the center, back to that light, so it won't affect the back roads as people go out. So all the additional people from the expanded TJ Maxx will be using that light. It's the same light that people will be using to enter and exit this Equinox, which means 80 cars every class is an hour, 80 bicycles an hour, 80 in, 80 out. And that means how long would the traffic light on Montauk Highway have to be to accommodate 160 cars an hour after the expanded TJ Maxx as well? I urge you to think about that. I have photographs of the SoulCycle from a year ago on July 4th weekend. Their entire parking lot is filled up, the entire Butter Lane street side is filled up. They even filled up the private parking lot of Hay Ground School down the street. Their parking lot alone could carry at least 50 cars, full up, Hay Ground full up. That's this 150 that you mentioned, I think. Not sure that will be enough. I also want to mention something else that isn't mentioned in the scoping. I may not have enough time to read all this, but you'll get a copy of my statement. Everyone talks about the fact that we have wonderful new nitrogen-removing systems, and that certainly such a complex as this would have one of those. But at a fitness center that has that many bicycles, how many toilets, how many showers, how many washing machines to wash all the towels? There will have to be a tremendous amount of sanitation to keep a fitness center clean. These nitrogen-removing systems do not remove bleach, they do not remove detergents, they do not remove very strong chemical cleaning products. What are we going to do about that? I'd like to see some specifics about how many of these toilets, showers, washing machines, the dryers, we speak to energy use. How many dryers, how many, how much electricity for bicycles and all the equipment? This is a very high use. Monday night, we had a CAC meeting, and a former chair of the CAC, who's now become more active again, thankfully, said, you know, wait a second. Years ago, when I was Chair of the CAC, I thought we nailed this highway business. We got this zoning, and it's at 15,000 square feet, and it was done so we would not have superstores out here. 27,000 square foot Equinox is a superstore. And I said, well, apparently, New York State mandates that local governments will have to go through a secret process, and all applicants have to be given the opportunity to request a variance from the zoning laws. So I understand that that's what's going on. I hope that's what's going on, that we're going through these motions. But in fact, there is no place for a superstore on the most congested part of Montauk Highway, and one of the most sensitive, according to New York State and the town, environmental areas in the town, which is Kellis Pond. This is slightly north, the water runs south into Kellis, into Mecca's. There are fish, there's, and it's not just, a lot of people have this perception that Kellis is all, you know, well-to-do people who have homes right there, and that's all that it's going to affect. That is true, that there are a lot of homes. I wish there wasn't. But there is a public access on the highway where Lake Drive is. People fish there, people can launch boats there, that's public access. If something happens to this lake and it's already impaired, I'm sorry, pond, it's already impaired, this will affect the recreational opportunities of the whole community, and that's another specific. I won't take up more of your time tonight. I will submit my written statement, as the rest is, the other issues, and I will try to be as specific as I can as you request.
Thank you. Thank you. Larry Penny. You don't have to sign in, Larry, we have your card. That's the purpose of this, to save time there.
Larry Penny. And I want to, I'll be short, but there was some kind of DEIS written for this by a neutral party at one time, but when it was before PDD application. At any rate, it's changed a bit. But I wanted to just read to you, I've got so much junk here. Here's a Shenandoah Bay Atlantic Ocean Watershed map from the DEC, and how many water bodies are of, 18 on this particular page, are impaired. Kellis Pond is one of the impaired water bodies, and Hook Pond, not Hook Pond, Georgia Pond, Wayne Scott Pond, Sagaponic, I could read a bunch, but nine out of 18 on this page are impaired. And this is impaired, meaning it's not to be used for swimming. You can catch fish there, if there are fish still surviving, but it's not to be used for swimming, meaning that it has probably got to have blue-green algae like so many of these other places around here have, like Lake Agawam. You wouldn't want to swim in Lake Agawam, I don't think. At any rate, I don't know what you have in terms of what we, what we've done in the past, but I think you have the attorney's letter with Mr. Dermody, Peter Dermody's response, and my response, I had about 12 points, but I'm really worried about the health of this pond. I mean, since when I first started working for East Hampton Town, there were no impaired water bodies, at least nobody thought they were impaired. But nine out of 18, and they're increasing, and each year, little pox of a hook last year, the year before that, Sagaponic Pond. So I have this to give you, and really, there's so much stuff, I'm sorry, but...
Who do I give it to? Okay.
Give it to Jackie. Thank you, Larry. Nancy Walter.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Walter, your host. I've been a resident of Bridgehampton for 27 years. Before I start my remarks, I would just like to note that there's a record in this room tonight, perhaps. We have four chairs of the Bridgehampton Citizens Advisory Committee here, prior and present. We have Shira Kalish, we have Carrie Millard, myself, and Pam Harwood. So that's a measure of the continuity in our community. I think it says a lot. I would like to start with the premise that nothing prevents the planning board, or the ZBA, from enforcing the existing zoning code and limiting the applicant to 15,000 square feet. All of our presentations point in that direction. It's not a radical request, and it respects the applicant's right to put up a profitable building. It's also consistent with the hamlet's comprehensive plan, albeit now out of date, in need of an up, now out of date and in need of an update. That comprehensive plan was written in 2004. We are in need of an update. If this project is not limited in scope, it will create a major bottleneck at the western end of Bridgehampton Main Street to mirror the existing bottleneck at its eastern end. If it backs up to Watermill, which it probably will, it will create a continuous traffic jam from Watermill to Sagaponic Road. There will be approximately five miles of five mile per hour traffic, four to five months of the year, that will totally destroy the quality of life along the hamlet's Main Street and its central east-west artery. Why not avoid this disastrous outcome and simply enforce the zoning code and limit this project to, the Equinox to its 15,000 square feet? Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Fager.
Fager. My name is Peter Fager. I live on, just off of Lumber Lane in Bridgehampton, and I've been a resident of the East End for 60 of my 64 years. I just want to really drill down on the traffic resulting from the SoulCycle, because we can quantify that, get a little more granular, and hopefully I can leave you with a visual that'll help guide you in the future. So we know that they have 80 bikes, and according to my niece, who uses the one by the barn on Butter Lane, they go up for sale at 12 o'clock on Friday, and they sell out about 15, I'm sorry, on a Monday, and they sell out about 10 minutes later. So we know that they're all sold out. So you have 80 cars coming in and 80 cars coming out. Now, we know that, we don't know where all the cars coming in are coming from. They could be coming from the east, from the west, from the north, from the south. But we do know that every hour, on the hour, you're going to have 80 cars exiting onto 27, either going east or going west. Now, what does 80 cars look like, leaving all at once? The average length of an SUV, because they're going Equinox, is 17 feet. You can take out your calculators and follow along. 80 cars times 17 feet is roughly a quarter of a mile of cars, leaving at once. What's a quarter of a mile look like? Citroellas to the car bell. That's a quarter of a mile. So you're going to have that leaving all at once, every hour, on the hour. I think that, you know, plus, that's going to impact the ability of people coming in to the SoulCycle to go for their class. Now, if you've just spent 45 bucks to reserve a bicycle to pedal around for 45 minutes and not go anywhere... forty-five minutes and not go anywhere, and you can't get in the facility because everyone's coming out, you're going to have a lot of stressed-out millennials and you don't want that. I just think that this proposal is not what was intended for highway business. It's too big, it's too large, it's going to have a negative impact on the environment, on Kellis Pond, on the traffic and our quality of life. And I think it should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Spilka?
I'm going to be reading.
Okay. Fine.
Andrea, sorry.
Andrea apologizes that she's not able to be here this evening, but asked if I could read a statement from her. Dear Chairperson LaFaro and Planning Board members, I am writing on behalf of the Southampton Town Civic Coalition in support of the many concerns that have been raised by the Bridgehampton CAC about the proposed fitness center on the Connor property in Bridgehampton. The developer is asking for a variance to almost double the allowable size of the building. It is inevitably, inevitable that increasing to a 27,000 square foot health club will increase water use as well as the resulting nitrogen impact on the aquifer and nearby Kellis Pond. The increased parking allowed at the site, resulting in an increase in traffic, is also problematic. In reviewing this project, I encourage you to consider that fitness centers of this size and scale will result in a concentration of high traffic with many cars entering and leaving the premises at the same time. In addition, based on the experience in Spianke, where a large fitness center has changed hands three times in the last four years, they are not necessarily a sustainable operation, especially when the building is very large with a high overhead. I also ask that you consider the cumulative impact on traffic that could result if both this development and the TJ Maxx expansion at the Bridgehampton Commons. Montauk Highway is the main conduit for all traffic going east and west along the South Fork and is already a nightmare during certain times of day and seasons of the year. The safety of pedestrian traffic needs to be considered also. Our economy depends on tourism, so that ensuring water quality as well as a reasonable traffic flow is essential. Please keep in mind, too, that increased traffic delays would likely result in additional helicopter noise from wealthier residents and visitors and would cause significant evacuation problems should a large-scale emergency arise. For all of these reasons and on behalf of the Coalition and the civics and members we represent who will be negatively impacted when traveling east, I respectfully ask that you deny the variance. Sincerely, and thank you, Andrea Spilka, President, Southampton Town Civic Coalition.
Thank you. Susan Harrison?
It's me, too. Don't mind your concern, but Susan could be here tonight also, last-minute issue. I'd like to read her statement. Sorry, got mixed up with the photographs. Dear members of the planning board of the town of Southampton, my name is Susan Harrison and I reside at 126 Hildreth Lane in Bridgehampton. I am concerned about many aspects of the proposed Connor Friedlander Gateway project, including its long-term impact on traffic, adverse effects on existing land use plans, community character and infrastructure, the degradation of Kellis Pond, et cetera, but I will focus my comments today on the project's potential adverse and permanent impact on ground and surface water. The Connor Friedlander Gateway proposes an equinox fitness facility, but nothing in the draft scope addresses this use and its specific impacts. Fitness facilities are intense consumers of water. How many showers, lavatories, and toilets are proposed? Will there be an onsite laundry? Is a restaurant or food service being proposed? Will food be prepared in the facility? Many of the residences adjacent to the site of the Connor Friedlander Gateway use well water. What will be the impact of the proposed facility on the quality and availability of this water? Chemicals typically found in the wastewater and fitness facilities, detergents, bleach, body creams, soaps, pharmaceuticals, have an impact of water resources above and below ground. Will this proposed water waste, water treatment system protect the aquifer in Kellis Pond from these contaminants? The operating hours for fitness facilities are usually 5:00 AM until 11:00 PM. If that will be the case of the proposed facility in Bridgehampton, will the result be twice the water usage of normal hours of business? I respectfully suggest that the draft scope be revised to require detailed information on the above issues. Sincerely, Susan Harrison.
Thank you. You'll submit all of those?
Yes, I will. Here's.
Meredith Berkowitz?
Oh, I will at the end, when I'm finished.
Meredith Berkowitz?
Meredith also couldn't make it. She wanted me to read her statement, but in fact, it was so long that I will have her just submit the statement directly to you.
Fine.
And the last one might be?
Stuart Zuckerman.
I'll read Stuart's statement. Whether it's called Connor Friedlander Gateway or any other name, it is not something that should be allowed as proposed. I have owned a home in Bridgehampton since 1980 and have seen the transformation of a cozy village to a crowded suburban town. The shopping center directly across from the proposed site is nicely set back from Montauk Highway, but the vast majority of traffic entering or exiting the Commons uses a road directly across from the proposed gateway development. The proposed gateway will be just another series of buildings next to an already crowded stretch of road, including a mattress store, a pizza place, which itself creates traffic jams. Instead, the town should steer the proposed tenants of Connor Gateway to commercially zoned land being developed on Butter Lane just north of the underpass, west of the railroad station. You might not realize, there's already a Soul Cycle there, much more appropriate area with lots of space for parking. Sincerely, Stuart Zuckerman. Thank you.
Thank you. Shira Kalish? Former CAC president?
Thank you for having me, Shira Kalish. I'm going to make comments specifically regarding traffic and congestion at this spot and emergency vehicles, but I do have some background in this. I was thoroughly involved with the process as the CAC chair when Dennis Suskind initiated the Hamlet Plan for Bridgehampton and then subsequently the PDD. I was heavily involved with planning for the intricacies of the PDD, which then led to the superstore law. There's a lot of history and planning that went into this process by the Bridgehampton community and by town government in terms of creating the superstore law. The superstore law essentially encompassed all the thinking that we're discussing today related to the environment, the impact, the community preservation, the traffic. All of those elements were what led to the superstore law. This was not a piece of legislation just dumped on somebody. This was not just relevant to Bridgehampton. This was a town-wide initiative and something we thought was important. Another piece of legislation from the same era was the CPLF law. That's nothing I want to pull back now and I don't want to pull back on the superstore law. These were things that we maybe did decades later than other communities like Nantucket and Boulder, Colorado and places, but they're things that have an important impact and were important laws and at least we passed them when we did. And I'm asking that you not go back on the 15,000, on the 15,000. Twenty-seven square feet, 7,000 square feet is doubling it and you're not just doubling the business. When you double the size of a retail, it's exponential. It figures into the explanation of how they calculate sales and how they calculate employees and everything else. You can't just double your business, you can triple and quadruple your business when the building doubles. There are retail formulas which go into this and that's why Rigio essentially decided not to do a Barnes &amp; Noble and pulled out, because he didn't want a building that was small. His business was predicated on a larger building size. That's where the economics work. So I just think we really need to think back at why we would even reconsider allowing a 27,000 square foot building in here. I have complete and full proper, respect for the property rights of this owner. They can develop it, there are things that can go in here, there are plenty of uses. They did not go into this property blindly. Most of this property was purchased after this whole first round of debate and PDB, PDD discussion happened. They know the value of the property. It was based on a zoning that existed and in fact, Dennis Suskind expanded highway business, expanded the uses. There's nobody that's taking a hit financially. This property is valuable and they're asking for even more value to it. This is just simply greed at the expense of the community. Did you just say disgusting?
I said yes, that's what I said. I mumbled it myself, yes.
You please address comments to the board.
Direct yourself to the board.
Yeah.
I heard it.
Yeah.
So I just think that we need to look back. We didn't want to become a riverhead. If you read the Hamlet studies, it's very specific language, talking about why these things are even more important in Bridgehampton than some of the other places in town. We carefully and thoughtfully went through every element of this. We discussed the uses of highway business. Dennis specifically, we talked about health clubs being like an Omni. The business has shifted. It's more class-oriented, it's more retail-oriented, which brings up the biggest consideration in the traffic. If you've tried to go out of the King Cullen parking lot and make a turn east at the light, there frequently, one or two cars can get through. There's so much traffic streaming through on Montauk Highway, one or two cars get through. If you're lucky, five cars get through. So I'm not sure how you would possibly expect cars to come out at a light in two places when the existing traffic is at a standstill much of the time. We put two bus shelters in years ago, which the community and the CAC really fought for. Their employees who used the buses, we needed bus shelters there, you know, I don't know what happens to that. One of the major, there wasn't a lot of community benefit frankly in the PDD as it was initially conceived. Dennis's vision for it was that housing was a big benefit, which sounded nice, but I thought it was unfair to make commercial developers be landlords. That wasn't their job, that wasn't what they were there to do, but that's, that's the whole discussion for the past. But the, the big benefit was that the development said that all of these parcels had to filter into one egress, one curb cut, and that that was the benefit and that we weren't going to have all these separate curb cuts and we're going to try to restrict the traffic. So one curb cut was really central to the PDD and what the community was essentially getting out of it. This plan has two curb cuts and you look at the second curb cut and it actually looks like maybe it makes sense, maybe it alleviates some of the traffic, because it doesn't look like you can turn across traffic. It's just for traffic that's flowing east. But the problem is, if you have a continuous stream of cars thinking they're getting out of Soul Cycle and turning into that sort of back exit and streaming in, there's probably fifteen car lengths between that exit and the actual light and you're actually creating a worse situation, because no one's going to get down Montauk Highway because of the stream of cars into that second egress. So I think you have to very seriously look at the entrance, the exit. I think this is so fundamental to how this property is used, you can't ignore the curb cut situation. The parking situation, even at 432 spots, I think is woefully underestimated. If you look at not just one class going on, we talked about one class of eighty people, there, there are easily four classes, if not six, going on at a time. Because I see yoga, I see all sorts of Soul Cycle things, there are too many classes, there's too much in and out, there's no way to feed on to the highway. And we've got to discuss egress. Emergency vehicles is also an important issue. We look at Montauk Highway all the time. I don't like to be in an ambulance, I've had to go to the hospital this summer already. If you look at what goes on in Butter Lane with Soul Cycle, it's not a jump to say that these people and their Suburbans are going to miss their yellow light to get into Soul Cycle to wait for an emergency vehicle. I mean, you're, you're creating a real fervor around getting to these timed classes and we have emergency vehicles coming through every single hour. Bridgehampton is not just Southampton Town. I mean, we're, communities are linked and East Hampton is a crucial part of this and we don't want to think about it, we're just looking out for the interests of our community. But the people who should be panicked about this are Wayne Scott through Montauk. I mean, this is affecting their lives heavily and we can't think about this in a vacuum. I'm very concerned about our ability to access this site and what it will do to the backroads. Traffic was shut down on Cook's Lane and Watermill because that was such a severe through-traffic problem. We have other roads that are just as bad and you're just forcing this traffic in an angry rage onto Hildreth and Bridge Lane and Sagaponic Road. These people are angry and they're flooring it because they're not moving and they're stuck on the highway. And the intensity and the anger of this traffic is an enormous problem. So I ask you, go back, read the Hamlet study. There are portions that speak to this. This was thoughtful, planned legislation that benefited the community and I really hope that you take into account that there are things that can be built on this land, there's money to be made, the landlords can profit, but everyone went into this knowing what was possible on the land, knowing what the zoning was. Everyone except for maybe the party who just bought the Trachtenberg House is aware of what, you know, what goes on in this land and I just ask you to consider that.
In your comments, you know, it's important that you specifically state exit, egress, the various details, because that's what's incorporated into the scoping document. This is your document as well as ours.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have the last speaker, Peter Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Peter Wilson, 28th Fenton Drive, Bridgehampton. And my comments tonight are going to be brief and I'm going to focus primarily on the fitness center portion of the proposed plan, since we are uncertain what the uses and building configurations will be on the remaining portions of the site. So of course, this is occurring in that context. The general impact context for this proposed facility is very problematic in two important ways. Montauk Highway traffic density is very high at this intersection and frequently suffers backups from rush hour and Bridgehampton Main Street congestion. You've heard that repeatedly tonight. The site itself is environmentally sensitive due to prevalent subsurface drainage patterns toward Kellis Pond, which is already suffering from water quality problems and you've heard that repeatedly tonight. The town master plan for Bridgehampton envisions highway business uses for the road frontage bordered by single-family residential to the south of the subject property. The Hamlet master plan clearly specifies that new development in this area be limited to structures of no more than 15,000 square feet and be styled to be compatible with the rural character of the surrounding community. In other words, do not follow the precedent established by the existing shopping center across the street. That's what we're trying to avoid. Appropriate scale and rural contextual character should be primary objectives for this development, not big box architecture and large parking lots typical of suburban communities. It is not clear to me how the equinox program and design meets that requirement at all. Close proximity to the highway and the use of metal building finishes are hardly a good starting point for this application. The facade of the front building will be close to 120 feet in length. Heavy landscaping will be necessary to buffer the building along the frontage to mitigate its effect. The front yard setback has to be minimal, because the rear building and parking pushes everything forward toward the highway. So that, that limits the amount of landscaping you can provide and limits the amount of buffer that you can provide. The building is out of scale and variances are required for parking setbacks and accommodation of the two buildings totaling 27,000 square feet. In reality, a single 15,000 square foot building would be fine for the site and not require variances. It would still be the largest facility of its kind on the East End. Careful attention should be. Careful attention should be paid to contextual appropriateness by the board to understand how well the applicant is meeting the master plan guidelines and use definitions, and you've heard quite a bit of that from the prior speaker. We doubt that, if that has been given very much consideration by the applicant in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you. So that comes to the end of the cards that I have, unless there's someone else who wishes to speak in the public.
Can I just have a few comments?
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Three points. The traffic counts were taken at peak hours in August of 2018. Want to make sure that everybody knows that. The submitted scoping document specifically includes potential development in addition to the equinox on the remainder of the property. And then in terms of this square footage issue, as we demonstrated both before the Zoning Board of Appeals and this board, a further subdivision of the property into a fourth lot, a fourth conforming lot, would yield more square footage than proposed on the equinox parcel. So people can't do these things in a vacuum. Thank you.
Thank you. So the secret regs concerning a scoping document, that the lead agency, which is the Planning Board, must have a final scope within 60 days from the submission of the draft scope. So that means that you all need to get your comments in to us between, well, we were going to say August 2nd, but by August 8th, the very latest, because they have to be incorporated into the final scope, and be specific where you need to be specific, so that it's clear, so that the final scope can be written. So we're looking now at...
Well, we have to...
You have to decide on August 8th.
We have to adopt on the 8th, so...
Yes, Madam Chair. So really, by Friday, August 2nd would be ideal.
Okay.
So that the planners have an opportunity to review those documents and to incorporate them.
To write it, okay.
We have time to review it as well.
August 2nd.
Friday.
Right, Friday. So get what you have into us, into the Planning Department, specifically your details. They'll be incorporated into the scope. They're very important. And on August 8th, this final scope will be presented and adopted. Okay?
I'll give a suddenly written comment.
Yeah, so let's close with a seven-day written comment period. Eight-day, eight-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, so six in favor, one absent. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Phil, second by Dennis, all in favor.
You adjourn.
Yes, we adjourn.
When are you hitting the riddle? Tomorrow morning?
Yeah. No. That's all.